Okay, and we're live. Hello, good evening, good afternoon, this is uh... And good morning, wherever you are in the world, or whatever times uh... Uh, pretty much time periods you work in, you just got off work. This is a scene for Hong Kong House of Cards. And we find Charlie texting Zhu to meet him up at the council chambers. And what he got back from Zhu kind of uh... Got him to uh, a little bit concerned, so he just goes, "Just meet me at the council chambers, we'll talk there." Send, and he uh, he'll meet her up at the council chamber.
And um... Zhu will be sat in one of the seats, writing in a notebook, in Cantonese. Looks like she's working on poetry.
Okay, um, he will... Charlie would uh... Will give her a minute to uh, to recognize, uh, catch that he's there, not disturb her.
She'll look up and smile and close the notebook.
So how are you?
I'm relatively well.
Um, just real quick perception from Lurch, because he's curious about something. And three successes, I'm guessing he's gonna sense that you're enchanted?
Um, sure, why not? Although she could have already told you that in the text, it's up to you.
Yeah. Um, so what all, uh, what all happened when you talked to Adam?
We discussed the nature of his house and his being. Including the nature of what it is to take a squire. That's gonna be the only comment she makes on that particular matter.
Okay, um, that's good, um, just... When we get done here, as, when you get a chance, when you're done with writing your poetry, because out of character, due to his, uh, her teaching him Cantonese, he caught a glimpse of what she was writing.
Yep.
Um... I would suggest write, uh, write down what she, uh, what was talked about, so, yeah, so... So you can remember it afterwards, and what you saw.
We discussed matters before. Uh, Adam altered my vision and took me to his sanctuary.
Okay. Uh, it'd still be a good idea, because uh... When he does that, it somewhat has a really, it leaves blanks in your memory.
Yes. I remember the first time.
And I'm assuming...
I was always able to remember what had happened here.
True, true. Alright, um... On a different note, I was wanting to see if I can learn, um... Some... Learn a ritual, if you know it.
She'll nod.
Well, right. Um, Bride of Talisman Dedication?
Yes, it is a useful one to know.
Alright, um... That'd be very, uh, I'd be much appreciated about it, and I... I have some things I can probably, uh, it'll... Let you, I can teach you one. I met up with a new vampire the other night, and she let slip some Kindred lore that might be very useful on a later date.
It is always good to know about our allies in the House of Staves.
Yes. Um... Let's start off with the ritual, and then we can do, uh, do the lore lessons.
That seems reasonable. Have you, um, much experience with rituals before?
Um, I have skill in them, I just never built up my, uh, repertoire of rites to, uh, use with my, with that skill.
I understand. And uh... It should not be overly difficult to learn. It was the first that I learned. It is always handy to be able to locate one's own. And so it's rather than relying on another to do so. Although I can do so for you, should be prepared to, uh, learn something else.
Probably, uh, probably when, uh, uh, what I'll probably do, because my, uh, Rite Master's always busy due to the goings-on with the wall. Let's see here. I'm guessing I, um, this would be the time for me to roll Intelligence plus Rituals, and uh... Because I'm assuming she'll start demonstrating the ritual?
Uh, she will, very shortly, yeah.
Alright. He's gonna throw Willpower into it, because he really wants to, uh, know this ritual.
It is a useful one. Um, but yes, she will... She will, um... Inscribe a circle on the floor, using her pencil. Uh, rubbed off again, being a presumably stone or wood floor. And, um... She'll place her backpack inside the circle. This is what I was demonstrating. And...
Alright.
She will chant, clearly enunciating the words, um... Although she will chant in Cantonese, you get the feeling, as with most rites, that it, the, um, intention is more important than the specific wording.
Alright.
But, um... It will sound, it will sound almost like a poem, because it rhymes, which helps her to remember, but it wouldn't rhyme in English. Out of character, I don't know what would rhyme in Cantonese, so I'm just going to improvise, but...
Yeah!
But in the Cantonese that she's speaking, it rhymes.
Okay.
And she will say: "These items are as much a part of me as my fur. They go with me where I go, and return when I return. Because I have no fur, when I am human, I need these items to travel with me on my journeys. I ask the spirits to look upon these items, and know their worth to me." And then she will step into the circle, along with the backpack. And, uh, she will kneel down and place her hands on the backpack, and go: "I connect this with my essence, with my spirit, with my body, with my soul." Then she's gonna stand back up again, pick up the backpack, and step back out the circle. And look at you.
Okay, with, alright. With the Willpower, he's got two successes, he basically does the exact same ritual, but in, uh, you notice that the ritual, in the ritual circle, he jots down, um... Here's your, uh, here's Zhu's clue, he's, uh, his tribe's got connections with some sort of magic. He's jotting down augmic runes that, uh, he, he translated from the Cantonese runes, runes you put down on the floor and on the circle. And he, uh, does the exact same ritual on the, on the book, a little journal notebook he carries around, just in case some, like, things go sideways, and, yeah, because he does traffic with changelings, and the miss, like, clock him with, uh, with memory loss, so he, uh, he has that there to jot down, what, yeah, so he can remember it. Uh, does the whole ritual, uh, like you, like you demonstrated, with the, with the book.
And, uh, just for reference, it is, uh, Wit's Rituals, uh, Difficulty 7, for this particular rite.
Oh, uh, Sean! Do what?
You've, I mean, to actually cast the rite, it is Wit's Rituals, Difficulty 7. To learn it is Intelligent Rituals. But seeing as you're now actually casting the rite.
So that was the first roll, we have... And... Two successes.
You only need one, but yes. Zhu's went very well. Yeah.
Wow!
Yeah, um, yeah, that, that should be, it should be done, out of character, all sorted. You have bonded the book. And we can now just assume that whatever you are wearing or carrying with you, and want to take into the Umbra, you have bonded at some point.
Yeah, I'm pretty mu, uh, pretty much, he only was... What, uh, basically what was, uh, what you notice whenever he shifts in and out of Krenos, is his pants. So you know he's got, uh, those were dedicated for him, so now he knew anything else on his own.
Uh-huh, and you can dedicate an entire outfit of clothing as one item. It costs a point of Nosis to do the dedication, um... And you can only have as many items dedicated to you as your Nosis.
So at some point, I'm going to have to get Nosis 2. Uh, that's, uh, that's for end of this month.
Yeah, but I do think that you should basically be covered for...
For this?
Say four to five. And you have been spending time around spirits, and so forth, so you should be covered for your XP.
Yep. Um, now, after that's all said and done, Charlie is going to, uh... Read, uh, retell his, what he learned of, uh, Kindred lore.
Okay, go ahead. She was looking, I'm making notes.
Basically, he tells you, as you, about everything that, uh, that all the, uh, the pop culture stuff knew. And basically, he tells you what all, uh, the lady vampire told him was completely wrong. And all, he tells you all the way up to level, uh, the level 2 of the Kindred lore.
Uh, sorry, you cut out a second there, and I'm not sure, it was probably on my end, but you still...
Oh. Um, I said, uh, he tells you basically everything up to Kindred lore 2. That's what Sam told me, uh, that his character tell, uh, told Charlie.
Okay. I would generally recommend, you know, actually talking about in character, but...
Um, he basically tells you, uh... Well, there's, uh, apparently there's multiple, uh, groups called clans, they sound like tribes in the Gru. Uh, she was of the Asimites, there's one called the Ventru, the Sombra, uh, Gangrel, Ravnose. And there's two sects, Camarilla, uh, Camarilla and the Sabat. And apparently the Camarilla, from what I could tell, uh, try to hide themselves as human. So most of the time, if you, like, use the gift Sense Worm on them, if it, I guess, they're high enough on that path, uh, it doesn't register as worm. From what I ga, uh, gathered, she didn't use those exact words, so I'm kind of paraphrasing. They do, are affected by sunlight. Decapitation, uh... Uh, pretty much, it brings them to final death as well.
Decapitation does do that with a lot of things.
Yes. Um, if, apparently, uh, not all of them are affected by holy water and crosses, like I thought.
I do fail to see why Christian-associated religious artifacts would have any greater or lesser power than any other religious artifacts.
Uh... Um... Let's, she told me a lot of stuff. Uh, apparently she's not very well-liked by the person that's... Um, gave her the bite, which she called it the embrace. Um... But other than that... With the Camarilla ones, they don't kill when they feed, which... Which is really against every pop culture reference known, uh, known out there. And apparently they're not repelled by garlic.
I did rather think it more likely that our kind would be repelled by garlic than that the dead would be.
Yeah, considering since the scent smell. Uh... Trying to think, uh, think out of character, what, uh, what he would always say, uh, say that would pertain to, uh, that level of Kindred lore.
Now, if you want, we can move on to the questions he had.
Say again?
If you want, we can move on to the questions he had.
Okay, um... I have a question for you, uh, because, uh, when he's done, tell, uh, retelling everything he know, uh, learned from the, uh, from Sam's vampire. Can you tell me some lore, Kitzune lore?
I suppose, what is it that you want to know?
Uh... I heard y'all are tricksters, is that, uh, is that true?
Significantly less so than the Koyote. We are no more tricksters than many other breeds. Of those of us in the Ascendi, I think it's significantly more likely that Gust would be a trickster.
Yeah, I, that would be the given, but then again, Mathias, sometimes, when he gets in his little impish moods, he, he can be right, uh, right there with him. Uh, I always, uh, wanted to, uh, to know how y'all came about, because, uh, I know the Chinese mythology behind Nari, and I was, uh, I was wondering if, uh, if he was involved in y'all's first coming about?
Prince Nari has a special fondness for the Kitzune, but it was the Emerald Mother and the White-Faced Lady that caused the creation of the Kitzune. We are the most recent of the breeds created by Gaia.
Ah.
After the War of Rage and the Impurgium. With so many of the breeds at odds with one another, but so many of the breeds having their own roles to play, as we all have our roles to play for the Emerald Mother. Bymangxi.
True.
Bymangxi was brought to the Emerald Mother to, uh, to become her servant. And... Unlike the others, he was curious about the world. He... He asked: "What is it that you want of me? You have the Garu to fight for you. You have the Ravens to gather your information." It seemed as though he was brought there not to be the best at anything. But... He did not wish to be trapped into the service. And he looked up to the Emerald Mother. And despite the White-Faced Lady having warned him that he should show respect and not look, not look to her, not look her in the eyes, still he did so. And
Gutsy.
The Emerald Mother saw the creativity and passion in Bymangxi. His ability to think outside of what was put before him. And so we were promised several things. That we will survive the sixth age, as many breeds have not. That we will have our freedom returned to us for our loyal service. And that one day we will be the best. That water's not clear. But the Kitzune are younger than the other breeds. There is much potential.
Interesting, he was very gutsy for, uh, for someone who's so young. And...
Foxes may not be the bravest, but we do seek out many things.
Could you say that again? You broke up a little bit.
I said, "Foxes may not be the bravest, but we do seek out many things that others do not see."
Ah. Um, and... Out of character, is that, was, is that, uh, is there more to level, uh, Level 1 Kitzune lore, or is it...
Probably not, really, I mean, that, that seems like a good, good start. I mean, to be honest, that's probably more Level 2 lore, but I haven't filled you in on all the Level 1 laws, so you...
Yeah, so that technically, uh, would, if that's Level 2, I would say, uh, I've got Level 1?
Yeah. Like I said, that lore is kind of from Level 2 section, but we haven't covered all the Level 1 sections, so kind of, yeah, it makes more sense to be Level 1.
Yeah, um... I noticed your, uh, uh... I noticed your Gru knowledge is not, um, all that complete. Do you, uh, what, do you have any questions from, uh, for? For eh for me. AKA out of character, he has groove eh groove Lord too.
I would like to know. Doing themselves.
Can you say again? You broke up.
I would like to know how the Garu go about organizing themselves.
Like on what scale?
In general. I get that there are groups, these tribes you mentioned. But how does one Garu interact with another Garu and? How do you? Select your. Leaders or your roles? Within your great.
Okay, um. Bless you. Do you go eh have you, I'm assuming you haven't seen a eh wolf in eh in China in a long time? Say again?
We have the hacken.
I was meaning eh regular wolf.
No.
Okay, um. How, at least, I mean. We. On a smaller scale, we divide our s- we. Group together in packs like eh a regular wolf. And usually. It's a whole thing of dominance and whoever's bigger. And all that, um. But we eh but with our society, it's a little bit more organized and. Rights of challenge. If you want to become alpha, you have the right to challenge the current eh current one. And we eh and. For eh to name an eh current alpha, we eh. We group together and basically vote on who would be eh eh who we named to be alpha. Of the pack.
So you vote to select an alpha and then. Whoever is largest challenges the alpha and fights them to gain control?
In a way, eh. Usually, if you want to test the vote when it's in the voting process. But when it's out of eh that eh stage, we eh eh. Eh, nobody has the right to challenge the alpha except during times of peace.
All the ever time.
That part of the eh eh that part of the law is kind of eh eh kind of a discrepancy. Uh, basically. When you're not eh when you're not fighting eh the tainted one, or in this case, the Weaver. So the law and eh the fighting eh would be the time of peace. Um, and. The only reason eh you would challenge is if. You feel like you could do better than the current alpha. If that makes sense.
To a degree. Why did you? Why did you choose to? To join in a sentai with the Henge Yokai of eh rather than eh.
You don't know. You're breaking up.
I said, why did you join to eh why did you choose to join a sentai with the eh Henge Yokai rather than others of your brethren?
It's. It's interesting you ask that, um. Would have eh eh try to join eh with others with my bre- eh brethren. But. The Karen here is mostly dominated by glass walkers and. Being of eh Stags eh eh children. I'm more of the eh more of wild. Than Weaver.
Given the troubles, given the troubles we have with the Weaver at the moment. Does. Raise issues.
Yeah. There's eh not that very many Fiana in Hong Kong. Or any of the wild eh eh wild affinity eh tribes of my eh brethren. In Hong Kong.
Is this why you chose to? Ally yourself with the changelings on the matter?
Ah, in a sense, yes, and eh on one hand, yes, and on on the other hand, no. My tribe has has had ancient packs. With the changelings of House Fiona since its inception. So I'll. Due to my tribe's. Pull to eh to eh to eh to that particular changeling house. We eh usually traffic together a lot and especially on these matters because it. If that it's a gray ish eh gray gray ma eh. Major threat that's gray that affects eh affects everyone. And eh he will. And to explain, I'd had to. Tell you eh eh tell you a story that takes you eh. Basically, it takes you back in time to the beginning of the Fiana. And he goes into this eh into the story leading up to. Up till eh to modern eh modern time to the present.
Okay.
And and he's eh he basically ends. And he says. He gave you Fiana lore once to eh basically answer your question why eh why he eh he. Hangs out with the changelings.
Okay.
Other than, other than eh other than basically the fact that they're more wild than Weaver. And eh out of character, since eh he was. He would have told you this anyway. He would eh told you about the fact that there. Instead of the original eh the thirteen tribes she eh she knew. There was at least. In the older ti- he would have told eh told you when he was eh doing the guru lore part of the talk. There would have eh there was at least. Sixteen from the thirteen that is eh around eh around now.
She won't look especially surprised by that. The Garu went around wiping out Bara. Then wiping out tribes seems small potatoes.
Our sentai brother Mathias is going after eh has, I think he's trying to go after eh. Travel totem of one of the three lost.
Sure not.
Great undertaking. He's still trying to bring back eh bring back Rainbow Serpent.
Out of fact, I think he's going after Bunyip. In fact, I'm pretty done.
He was going. Okay, eh he eh yeah, scratch that. He'd say, um. Either Bunyip or eh Rainbow Serpent would be a great undertaker for anyone to try and eh go after them. The other tribe that. Go ahead.
Adam saw bat.
Adam saw bat?
I'm not sure of the details, but he did say that. He saw a bat speaking Yiddish.
Eh, I was sure that was Mathias trying to mess with him.
It may have been.
But then again eh then again, he really doesn't use Yiddish all that much, so it could have been bat. Bat's bat is a. Even now is kind of a sore subject with the rest of my eh the Garu nation.
As well it should be.
We were ignorant on what we were doing in eh in in our ignorance, we lost eh what could have been an ally. In this eh in the time now. Or at least more of an ally in the time eh we are in now.
I do not think it was entirely ignorance.
Equal measures eh ignorance and eh bigotry and stupidity.
I have heard arrogance, but that is either here nor there.
I'm a theorist. Eh eh I'll freely admit I've acted stupid in the ti- eh in the past.
Hi, my name is Kim Burgess and um.
It just means eh I have to learn eh learn. I learn from mistake and move on.
First beating tickets I got in thirty-five years and um I was wondering if you could.
We all have things we must learn from. But. I understand that. You are close with Adam. But what do you think?
Oh, hmm. What do I think of what? You're breaking up again.
Sorry, um I get that you are close with Adam, but what do you think of his view of the world?
His view of the world. The fact that somebody needs eh tell eh pull him off his high pedestal eh. And pedestal is sometimes is eh it comes to mind. Cuz you've eh you've watched him at least once in combat. I've watched him twice. God, he is not.
He does seem to think himself rather invulnerable.
Eh, he's got a very big Peter Pan complex about that one.
To die would be an awfully big adventure.
And an adventure he I don't think he's ready for. Especially somebody that hasn't. He think I would as I'm guessing he's trying to find what he's looking for in life.
Sure not.
Oh, it's funny. My tribe counted eh counted him as kinfolk to begin with eh but eh what he's doing is pretty much formalizing the issue. All because he eh he wants. I'm assuming he's doing this eh eh what he's doing over a crush.
The Kitzune have. Less issue regarding kinfolk than the Garu do, I believe.
We're very tied to our kinfolk. But. Tell me what eh why does the Kitzune have less of an issue with theirs?
Because we have Batsu. Family. And this family is not simply family of the blood. The things that. Many. Find. Most needed in the kinfolk is that they not be afraid of them. But. We were created after. Their killings. And so our forms do not frighten the humans the same way others do.
Makes sense.
There is. Less difference between the kinfolk. And an ordinary human for the Kitzune. Most important thing. Is that they. Accept you for who you are. Accept you for who you are. Regardless of who they are. And that you accept them for who they are. Regardless of who you are. This is Batsu.
That's basically the core of any family.
Precisely.
Okay. Out of character, how well is your cult?
My cult is, I think it's two. Give me a sec.
Yeah, I'm kind of running out of thoughts. So I was like, how's your cult? And you said two, so that actually upgrades mine.
But, but yes, we're kind of more discussing Adam.
Yeah. What else do you want to know about Adam?
He seems very willing to throw his life away. To die for... Love. I don't think he understands what it is to live for it.
He may not understand what it means to live for it because he hasn't found it yet. From what I gathered, he's lived for a long time. And I'm, so basically I'm wading through... Pretty much years and years of masks. He put up to find out... To basically get to know Andrew, the human that Adam became one with, so to speak.
I tried to explain to him that there are many risks... To love in general, and more specifically among my kind. But...
You said your father lost his life in childbirth. Why?
When a Kitzune is born, a life must pay for the life.
That is... I can understand the balance principle behind it, but why? That at least makes it where one of the parents is out of the child's life permanently.
Sometimes both.
Or sometimes both.
As for the why, you would have to ask the Emerald Mother.
Even then, I probably wouldn't understand because... I knew my parents... With the Fiana, you're... You're with your parents until you go into your fostering in that last three year and a day. And you're with your aunt and uncle until you get accepted into the tribe.
Sure not. This is the importance of Batsu. Because... We know, all of us... That there is great risk. And... The risk is greater to the Batsu than to the Kitzune of the parents. But even should both survive the birth, someone will die.
Oh, that's great.
This is what I've tried to explain to Adam, and what I feel he does not really understand. He declares himself ready to accept any risk. Declares that death will not prevent him from returning. But he does not understand... That it is not like most of us. As I said, my father died in childbirth. My mother still mourns him.
I would imagine. As far as I can tell, the changelings are like us in one respect. When we, when they die, they don't, well, when we die, we go back to the Earth Mother. And then, then she... If she so chooses, she'll send us back to, to live again and continue fighting. But with the changelings, they return to the dreaming. And then the dreaming sends them back and they begin again. Although I know oaths are very important to them, I just don't know if they have an oath for marriage that'll last that long. Even if he was able to remember. Or not. If the oath is that powerful, he could probably... He would be pulled to you even though you're not yourself in the next life.
We do not return in the same way. We join with the Emerald Mother. And whilst... The essence may return, it is not the same. In the same way that... When water trickles down to the ocean... And water is removed again, it does not form the same droplets that it did before.
True.
When we die, us as we are now will cease.
Very true. Have you tried to broach your concerns to Adam?
Yes. As I said, I've tried to explain to him. But... He seems to see it... As a similar danger to anything else.
Oh, well, he is one of those types of people. He'd rather see himself in danger than his, than someone he cares about.
He does not understand that he's not one or the other. Whilst it is more likely the Batsu parent that dies when a Kitzune is born... It can be either. It can be both. And... There are more ways to hurt than the physical.
So basically, even if... So you're saying this is a spiritual feedback effect from the birth?
Sure not.
And conceivably, yeah, and conceivably... If this feedback was to take hold, it could, if it took Adam, it would permanently kill him.
That I do not know. But what I'm saying is whilst the risk may be greater to him, there is risk to me as well. Which he does not understand, does not choose to be. It could take me. It could take neither of us and then take someone else.
Oh, that's just lovely.
If you're a Kitzune, relationships are risk. I've tried to explain to him. It is risky. To you, to your partner, to your loved ones.
To him, though, life is risk. And it's a risk he's worth taking. He thinks it's worth taking, apparently.
True. And I accept that life is risk and love is risk for all. Regardless of anything else. But... I do not think he hears me truly when I speak of what this risk is.
And I don't know if I can break it to him either. It probably had to take firsthand education to have it done. And that's very morbid of me to say, but it may be true.
That being said... He says that he is barren.
He may be barren, but he may or may not be barren, but... He's... Well...
He may be.
Don't... Go ahead.
He may be. But... He is also intending to become kinfolk. And the energy of the Emerald Mother acts in strange and unpredictable ways at times.
Especially when you're bringing it, you're pulling it into an... To a energy cell that's priming with wild energy already.
And I'm sure you're aware... That all of us, all the children of the Emerald Mother... Have above-average likelihoods of conception.
This is very true.
Because her energy is in us, and it is creation, and it is pattern, and it is destruction. It is all these things.
I have a feeling if... If your relationship... Happens to go further... I'm not the one to stop it. But fair warning, if you're not... If you're not ready to have a child by the festival Beltane... Don't be near Adam. Or make your, make your intentions known that... That's not on your mind and you're not ready for it yet.
Sure not. It's... It is not likely to be on my mind for quite some time. But... Whether it is on the mind of the Emerald Mother is a different matter.
This is true. And I'm just gonna give you a helpful hint. Beltane is a festival held in springtime. And it's very, and it ups the likelihood of conception... Even further than what we already have normally.
Sure not.
It's a fertility festival.
Spring is a time of such.
Other than that, is there anything else concerning you about Adam?
Not concerning. Though I was somewhat amused to learn that... He had a child living with him, given his business.
Um, yeah, that's what I was about to tell you. He may be barren, but he is already in very deep parent mode. There's already rumors around the sept about because of that girl. Has, they, he actually took that girl to a known kinfolk of my tribe's bar. And, well... Due to my brethren's and I's very keen since a hearing... Being only overshadowed by our dear stepbrother Mathias's hearing. They heard him go very, very... Fatherly protective of the little girl. Cause she was... Talk, talking only in a platonic friendly manner, trying to learn about... What the young man, what the young man was drinking at the time.
She's going to smile wryly. Yes, well, it is often the way that it is one rule... For men and another for women. Or at least such they often believe.
Yeah. I know the young man that she was, the little girl was talking to, and oh dear lord, what he... What Adam thought, thought, thought could go on between those two. Oh, I could be further from Michael's mind. At uh uh at the moment. Oh, that kid's very mentally adult, but. Very, at some point you uh you can get a crack in that uh and that adult exterior to his mind and. And you can see the influences of the child still uh still in there. So, yeah. Even though it would uh what Adam thought would go on between those two is further from the truth, he uh. Uh he still went there.
As I said. Often, it is one rule for the men and another for the women, so far as the men tend to believe. Do as I say and not as I do.
Um kids, yeah, that's so, so ironic. He. Do you have anything else to ask about Adam other than that for I have changed the subject to. Another knowledge perk of mine? Other than the mini uh. He just stops himself and smiles and just goes uh just as the Fifty Shades of uh Shades of of Adam.
And he's going to um raise an eyebrow.
It's a it's a it's a. Pop culture refer uh reference off the book uh book and movie called The Fifty Shades of Grey.
Yes. But um. Given the um. Intimate knowledge you may have of certain matters. I thought it unlikely you would. Bring such details up. If you care to discuss them, that is entirely. Up to you.
Um. He chuckles for a bit and uh and he'll blush straight to his ears. None that I'm comfortable in saying right now.
Sure not.
While we're here, while uh uh would you mind is mind teaching me a little bit more in occult? Studies. If you know more than I do.
In what manner? Uh out of character, you can't just go.
Yeah, true, I was uh. My uh besides, my brain's starting to have a really big brain fart because it's saying sleep.
Sleep does sound like it might be an idea for you.
Yeah. We can end it, I guess we can end it here with is you and Charlie talking?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Alright, um. We in uh in the study session of the Enchanted and the uh the Druid. Uh it this study group session with the Enchanted and the Druid talking and uh. Learning from one another's uh for respective uh backgrounds and histories. Uh. And we have, this has been addition in addition to Hong Kong House of Cards. Thank you, see you later.